What? What, Lisa? What, I'm just trying to see. I can't get my eyes focused after coming from the outside. Can't see. Are you ready to roll? All right, folks, it is four thirty. I'd like to call the meeting to order. For public information, the copy of the Open Meetings Act is on the east wall of the Commissioners' Room. Roll call, please.
Meyer.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Knapper. Reisig.
Here.
Blue.
Here.
We'll all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, one God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any changes or modifications to the agenda?
I don't have anything.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for approval then, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes.
You have five yeses.
Thank you. A reminder, everybody, that the Board does reserve the right to go into executive session at any time if we do feel it's necessary and according to the rules and regulations and the statutes. Consent agenda, anybody like anything removed? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes.
You have five yeses.
Thank you. Motion, let's see, we've got a public hearing at four thirty for budget hearing summary for Relief Medical Fund, fifteen hundred, HIDA fund, and opioid recovery fund. Lisa.
This shouldn't be a surprise to you all, I brought this to you a couple of months ago. The Relief Aid Fund has gone over budget. And we had budgeted, I have a separate piece of paper here. No, I gave you a copy of it on the top. We had budgeted seventy-four thousand nine hundred and four dollars and sixty cents into this budget. And currently, as of May, I guess I put April thirtieth was seventy-five thousand one seventy-seven. We need more money in the fund because we've had more funerals and we've had a lot more general assistance items. We give out tanks of gas, we give nights in a motel. So, if you recall the discussion. So, this is all funded by the Keno Funds. So, I'm requesting to move an addition, or to increase expenses by an additional twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And as far as the other two, HIDA and opioid recovery, really probably did not need to be on this budget. I went to the NACO budget hearing last week. And what I'm over for budget is revenue. And you only have to come to budget hearing if your expenses are too high. And we've spent nothing out of opioid yet. I think we've got about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in there. But it's the HIDA funds that have more revenue than I anticipated at this point. So, really, neither one of those are problems.
Is it the opioid handled by the Sheriff's Department?
It's really not handled by anyone yet. We're just collecting the funds and then we can decide how we're going to.
I got you, okay.
Just work with them.
None of those funds can be moved out and put into some of those others now.
No.
Can I, I'd like to remind people to use their mics, please.
Yes.
At budget time, though, we could shift some of that around, or not?
Other funds, not necessarily these. HIDA funds are grant funds that come from the, from the State Patrol Sheriff, am I right? It's either State Patrol or the Grant Commission. And opioid, it has its own special purpose. You don't get to use it towards roads, you don't get to use it towards building purposes. There are maybe some county purposes for that, for that money. We have to explore exactly how it can be used. It's to remediate opioid overdoses in the community, so how.
There are, there are those that have given to like Region Ten, you know, to, or Region One, I mean not Region Ten, Region One to be used, so.
I know there's been interest in a body scanner within the jail, if we can use it towards that. But anyway, I'm, that's not why I'm here for the budget hearing.
Okay. You need a motion for the twenty thousand to be transferred, transferred, I'll make a motion.
For the expenses to be.
Hang on, we got, we got, we're in a public hearing. I need to close the public hearing first, and then we'll do that. Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody that wishes to speak for or against, for or against transferring funds? Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing, entertain a motion for either approval or denial.
Make a motion to approve the twenty thousand dollar transfer.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any other discussion? Record your votes, please. Are we okay?
You got five yeses.
Thank you. All right, next item. Need a motion to move into Board of Equalization, please.
I move that we move into the Board of Equalization.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes.
And Mark, you were my second.
Yeah.
Okay, first item on is discuss, sorry.
I need your vote, please.
I gave it to you once.
Try again, there we go.
How's that?
Thank you.
Thank you. First item to discuss, consider the approval of one motor vehicle exemption for Capstone. Heather.
So, I have one motor vehicle exemption for Capstone today. This vehicle is a tax loss of two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. This vehicle is also a renewal, so it has been previously tax exempt. Capstone provides forensic interviews and advocacy services to child abuse victims and their non-offending caregivers. We also facilitate MDT meetings and the Panhandle is directed by Nebraska State statute. This vehicle is used to provide travel to forensic interviews in Shadrin Alliance in Sidney. The vehicle will not be used for travel to, or will also be used for travel to MDT meetings, staff trainings, state chapter meetings, community presentations, court hearings, and appointments with victims and their families. And I would recommend the approval.
Could you give me that amount one more time, Heather?
Two hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Two twenty-eight, okay, thanks.
All right, I'd entertain a motion for either approval or denial, please.
I move that we approve the vehicle exemption.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Record your votes. Again?
Again. Line does the same thing.
I don't know if it's batteries or not, you have to just keep pushing it, no matter what it is. Okay. I need a motion to remove ourselves from Board of Equalization, please.
I'd move that we come out of Board of Equalization.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Record your votes.
You have five yeses.
Thank you. Okay, road bridge, discuss, consider NPPD easement for the electric transmission line. Steve, how are you?
Good afternoon. This is an easement for the NPPD transmission line they're bringing into town. It's simply, there's no structures on the easement, no poles, it's strictly for the lines in the air that they're willing to, or wanting to have an easement for. They value the amount of property at seven thousand dollars an acre that will be affected, and there's only point zero nine acres that will be affected by the lines in the air. So, they are offering us a one-time payment of five hundred and four dollars for the easement. I had Phil Kelly overlook the contract that they gave to us, and he's seen no issues with it, so. Simply just need a motion to.
Is that going to affect anything that we're going to be doing?
No, we don't, it's all in the air, there's nothing there that would affect any pavement inch claim that we ever do there, so.
Are they adding any poles at all?
They're all on private property.
They're on private property.
Those structures will actually be on our, on our right way.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion for either approval or denial.
I'd move we approve the agreement with Nebraska Public Power for the easement.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion? Record your votes. Just my signature. Right here. Sorry. Got to wipe that out. Thank you, Steve. Okay, under General Agenda Items, discuss and consider resolution for budget enhancement for the County Court and County Sheriff's budgets. Lisa.
You should have a copy of the resolution in front of you. These funds, the Sheriff Budget and the County Court Budget are both within the General Fund. We have a line item that we budget every year within the Admin and General portion for budget assistance in case budgets fall short or need some assistance at the end of the year, because we just can't always predict. And we put two hundred thousand dollars in that line. We're, I'm proposing that we move, I think it was a hundred, let me see, get my resolution up.
Hundred and ten.
Hundred and ten from County Court to cover the expenses of the County Court at this point. That fell short, because we, we have the court-appointed attorneys. That's last year, I think we moved a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to this line, the same thing. Wishful thinking that the fees will be less, we cut, and then they're just as high. So, we need to move a hundred and ten thousand dollars from the General Fund to the County Court. And Sheriff, Sheriff's Budget was, it's been, it's been rough the last few months. It's been high, he's, he had to pay for extra vehicles due to, to some accidents that, that were not because of our officers. And with some overtime that's happened through the year, and just a tough year, because I think we started off with a lower budget than he'd requested. So, I'm asking for an additional twenty thousand for his budget. I think at this point, due to some loss of a couple of officers and just they're running short staff, that he would be able to, they might be able to make it. But we're just making sure. So, looking for twenty thousand towards the Sheriff's Budget.
Okay.
Is any of this part of the new camera process? That'll all be in next year's budget?
Yeah, I just, I just like to brush, as an elected official, one thing I never want to do is stand up here this time of year and ask you all for more money. But, but we had some things that hit us. We had some exceptional overtime things that happened, and we had like a standoff where we had all these FBI people came in. But our, that was kind of an exceptional overtime thing. And then, we had, we had two of our patrol cars totaled by people who ran red lights and T-boned our patrol cars. Thankfully, somebody got, was hurt badly. But, but when you total a patrol car, yes, their insurance company has to pay for a patrol car, but if the patrol car's five or six years old, and we, we can't go buy one that's five or six years old, we have to buy a new one. So, that wasn't in the budget, and yes, we got some insurance money back, but it's not enough. And so, that, that's kind of what hit us, and it's, and so, you know, I don't want to stand here in front of you, and we think we're going to make it, but, you know, Lisa's putting twenty thousand in case we don't.
Okay.
Where are you, where are you wanting to move that from, just from the courts?
For the, we have a fund called the Administrative General Fund. That we set, set aside two hundred thousand dollars just for this purpose at the end of the year. That it can be moved by resolution to another General Fund budget. And the Sheriff and the County Court operate out of the General Fund. That Relief Aid Fund I just brought forward to you is its own special fund outside the General Fund, operated solely off of Keno Funds at this point. Makes sense, kind of, sort of?
Yes.
I move approval of the resolution authorizing a hundred and ten thousand dollars to be transferred to County Court Budget and twenty thousand dollars to the Sheriff's Budget.
Okay, that's the motion, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes. Are we clear, Kelly?
You have five yeses.
Thank you. All right. Next item, receive the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three audit presentation, Mr. Sylvester. How are you, sir?
Doing well.
Wonderful.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, I'm Kevin Sylvester with Dana Coen and Company. Been doing the county audit for quite a while now. We started, started on this audit back in December, and of course, when we get to tax season, there's no working on this thing. You just got to wait and get it done after tax season. I'll, I'll be pretty brief. I know you guys have a full agenda and a life outside of here. So, I handed out the actual audit report, call it the reporting package. If you turn back to page one in there, top of the page says Independent Auditors Report at the top. That's, that's really what we're hired to do, is, is render this three-page opinion on your financial statements. There really only a short snippet in there that really gives our opinion on it, and the rest of it is explanatory. I'll go down through there pretty, pretty quickly. Top of the page, we have audited the accompanying cash basis financial statements of Scottsbluff County, Nebraska, as of and for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Second paragraph, in our opinion, the financial statements referred above present fairly in all material respects. Third paragraph down, just a little bit of explanation of what an audit is. We conducted our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. Next paragraph down, makes the users of the financial statements aware that these financial statements are presented on the cash basis of accounting. Last paragraph on that page, management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of these financial statements. Top of the next page, our objective is to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements as a whole are free from material misstatement. Next sentence down, a very important concept in, in an audit. Reasonable assurance is a high level of assurance, but not absolute assurance. About the middle of the page, in performing an audit, we exercised professional judgment, identify and assess the risk of material misstatement, obtain an understanding of internal control, evaluate the appropriateness of accounting policies, and conclude about Scottsbluff County, Nebraska's ability to continue as a going concern for a reasonable period of time. Bottom of the page there, under supplementary information, making the users of the financial statements aware that there are some, there is some supplementary information presented on pages thirty-one through thirty, forty-five. And the schedule of expenditures of federal awards is also on page twenty-eight through thirty. Page three, last paragraph there, other reporting required by government auditing standards, making the users of the financial statements aware that another report has been issued in conjunction with this report. And that's our government auditing standards report, and that's on page forty-six, which we'll go through here when we get to it. Page four, statement of net position, cash basis. The only asset listed there under cash basis is cash. Ending cash as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, nineteen million, five hundred and forty-five thousand. The restricted and unrestricted portions, about, about eleven thousand of restricted and about eight thousand, eight, or eight million, eight hundred thousand unrestricted. Page five. That's the statement of activities, it's on the cash basis again. Statement activities is going to put all these expenses and revenues into broad categories of receipts and dispersments. Left-hand column there shows thirty-two million, nine hundred and thirty-two thousand total expenditures countywide. We had some charges for services to offset some of those costs of about six million. We had operating grants and contributions of amount nine point two million. And the net unfunded cost was about seventeen, seventeen million, six hundred and ten thousand. We had some general receipts, mainly property taxes of about twelve million. Motor vehicle taxes, about one point five million, other taxes, one point five million, intergovernmental receipts, one point seven million, and about two million in miscellaneous other receipts. Of those miscellaneous other receipts, we did have a building sale in there. We had some cost share reimbursements for the statewide radios. And we had some pretty significant health claim re, reimbursements, really. Reinsurance proceeds, that's what I was coming for. Page six. Statement of net assets and fund balances, cash basis. The first two statements that we went through was, was basically presented on a countywide basis. These are on a fund, fund financial statement basis. So, we have the General Fund and some major special revenue funds, and then we have the aggregate non-major funds presented there individually. Total governmental funds, the same you'll find on the first two statements, nineteen million, five forty-five in cash, and a little bit different fund balance classification, but still ten million in restricted, five million in committed, and about three million in unassigned. Page seven, statement of receipts, dispersments, and changes in fund balances. Again, presented on a fund financial statement with the General Fund, major non, major special revenue funds, and then non-major funds aggregate. Total receipts, thirty-four million. Total dispersments, about thirty-three million. Change in net receipts over dispersments, about, about two million. We had transfers in, transfers out of about eight point eight million. And started the year out at about seventeen point five million, end of the year at nineteen point five million. Total cash. Page eight, top of the page, statement of receipts, dispersments, and changes in net position, cash basis for fiduciary funds. Fiduciary funds are all those cash collections that you collect for other tax and authorities and remit to them, schools, cities, fire districts, cemeteries, all that, all those districts. All the cash that came in, about sixty-eight million. About sixty-eight million went out, started the year at two point three million, ended the year right at two point four million. Page nine. These are the notes to the financial statements. And the notes to the financial statements are going to tell the users of the financial statements about the county's operations and activities. They're going to tell all the users about significant accounting policies employed in developing these financial statements. We're going to give details of accounts, of balances, and transactions. We're going to give conditions and events that may be affecting the county. These notes run from page nine through, all the way back through twenty-seven. There's been no real significant changes in the finance, in the notes to the financial statements from prior years. They're pretty similar, although the amounts and dates and everything will change. Turning all the way back to the supplementary information just before page twenty-eight. There's, is supplementary information presented here. We have the schedule of expenditures of federal awards on pages twenty-eight through thirty. We have some budgetary comparison schedules for all of the major funds and the non-major fund aggregate. We have General Fund schedule of dispersments on page forty through forty-four. And then, we have a non-major fund combining schedule. We won't go through there in too great a detail, but if you look back on page twenty-nine, the total expenditures of federal awards is about two point five million. That's basically what the federal government gave you to run federal programs for Scottsbluff County. Well, let me, let me put it, that's what you spent of the federal programs, I think you got quite a bit more, actually. Page forty-six, top of the page, report on, on internal control and on compliance in accordance with government auditing standards. We call this our gas report. What gas is going to require is that we report on internal controls or financial reporting. So, if we find any issues that are at a level that we, rise to a level that we need to communicate with the Board, they would be communicated here. Bottom of the page, we identified a certain deficiency in internal control that we consider to be a material weakness described in the accompanying schedule of findings and question costs as items twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one, that we consider to be a material weakness. And that's on page fifty-two. That's the segregation of duties issue that we've had. We'll probably have that for many years to come until, you know, Scottsbluff County becomes, you know, two hundred thousand person, and we've got enough revenue and work to support several people in one office segregating those duties. Right now, you know, a lot of those duties get bound up into one person, and that's where we have the problem. When somebody's writing checks, recording the checks, reconciling the checks, doing the whole accounting process, that's not good internal controls. It's a significant, or material weakness. It is based on our opinion. It's not unique. I've got several counties that have that, and several, most of my clients have, have that condition. Top of the page on forty-seven, report on compliance and other matters. If we found any matters of compliance, we would report that here. Last sentence of that first paragraph, the results of our test disclose no instances of non-compliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards. Page forty-eight, top of the page. Independent auditors report on compliance for each major program and on internal control over compliance required by Uniform Guidance. I refer to this as the Uniform Guidance Report. And that sounds awful similar to the one report that we just went through, but this is specifically on your federal programs. In this report, we are going to give an opinion on, on whether you complied with those federal programs. Second paragraph down, in, in our opinion, Scottsbluff County, Nebraska complied in all material respects with the types of compliance requirements referred to above that could have a direct and material effect on each of its major federal programs for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. If we had any internal control items, we would also list that in here, or other non-significant compliance items. Let's see here, top of page fifty. We consider the deficiencies in internal control over compliance described in the accompanying schedule of findings and question costs as items twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one to be a material weakness. And again, segregation of duties. While that condition exists for financial reporting purposes, it also exists for, for federal program purposes. Page fifty-one, schedule of findings and question costs. This is just a summary of everything that we just went through. It's basically summarizing, I liken it to the, when we, when we get done with this, we have to submit this to the Office of Management and Budget. We report that online electronically, we do upload the financial statements, all of this goes in. But I don't think they want to read through fifty pages, so they skip right back to page fifty-one, and this tells them everything that they need to, to have. There are two things there on the bottom of page fifty-one that I think you guys would be interested in knowing. There were two major federal programs. The formula grants for rural areas, which is basically your transit system, and the coronavirus, coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, which is where all that six million dollars came from to use as you guys pretty much seen, seen that. The rest of them, that finding, details of that finding of segregation of accountings, accounting functions, is on page fifty-two. And then on the last page, you should have, it should be the corrective action plan, and that's your, the county's formal response to the federal government of what your plans are to try to correct that segregation of duties accounting finding. Any questions on that? I went through it pretty quick, I know.
You're getting pretty good at this, Kevin.
I, yeah, I'm getting the time down.
It doesn't sound long, you just mail them to us, where the notes say if you have any questions, give me a call. We're getting close.
I could do that.
No, we enjoy having you here.
I also have to issue a letter, letter with every one of our audits. It's called an AUC two sixty letter. It's just a required communication to governance. I would just call this a standard letter, there's nothing really too interesting in here. There are a couple, couple things that pertain directly to Scotts Brook County. Making governance aware of significant estimates embodied in the financial statements. Well, it's on the cash basis, those, those aren't, don't encompass too much estimates, but those budgetary comparison schedules do have your estimates of what you're going to budget, budget of expenditures for the year. And significant notes in the financial statements. Note five is your disclosure of debt, debt service requirements. Scotts Brook County does have quite a bit of debt out, and on the cash basis, that's really not presented anywhere except in the expenditures when you repay it and in proceeds when you, when you take it. So that's a significant note to the financial statements of Scotts Brook County.
What page is that debt on?
On page five, I believe. It's note, yeah.
It's twenty-two.
Twenty-two? Probably starts on page twenty-two, goes on for ten pages.
Oh, Manila goes back to twenty.
Yeah, so it starts on, starts on page nineteen, actually. Nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. And twenty-two, looks like it finished it up. Nope, twenty-three. Well, no, twenty-two, I'm sorry. Quite a few bonds, quite a few capital leases. I think the note is available. So yeah, there's a lot of cash, anticipated cash flow out for the next fifteen years. Ten?
Ten.
Okay.
I'll be fourteen, yes.
So I do notice that one of the, the very first item in the long-term debt is the money that we bonded to buy the emergency equipment for many of the other communities and all that being paid back primarily from other entities that are making payments to us. Would that be true?
That would significantly differ next year.
Okay.
Because the payment was made in August or September of this year. So it still shows as a big lease.
It'll be, it'll be substantially less.
All but three entities paid in full.
Okay, anybody else have any questions?
I think I asked this question last year or the year before. What is this note payable to Platt Valley National Bank for a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars?
I believe, is that the hanger?
It's a hanger.
So there was a hanger that was financed through a grant, you correctly found that. It's, I think it goes back to year two thousand.
It was the Collins hanger that's now, that's now.
Olic.
Olics. And they pay, they.
They make the payment.
Yeah, they make the payment.
They make, they pay through.
You guys are on the hook for it.
Right.
Yeah.
As long as they keep making the payment, you're okay.
Any other questions?
About the whole thing?
About anything that he just presented here.
So Kevin, I think your narrative here has told us that you don't have any significant concerns. There is some.
I would say that, yeah, yeah, there's, there's always going to be concerns. I mean, you know, I'm an auditor, I'm just going to worry. I don't have much hair, more hair than you do now. You know, it's, it's, you know, you always kind of want the best and sometimes you just got to take what works, and, and you got to measure it. You got to, you know, not everything's worth, you know, Fort Knox. You know, I mean, if you had to lock something up, sometimes, you know, a safe at home is fine, or, you know, ten bucks.
Yeah, so one of the concerns I've had, not that I know of any problems particularly, but I believe there are some small checking accounts of money that comes in and goes out that's not particularly accounted for in, in these numbers. Would that be true?
That is true, yeah. Pretty much, I wouldn't say pretty much, a lot of offices will have some cash at their office.
Some kind of petty cash fund or something?
Yeah, petty cash fund. Veterans Aid, you know, they have several cash accounts, checking accounts. And it's for emergency relief to veterans. You know, and they got to have it, they can't come to you and get a claim for it. They can after the fact, but basically they kind of need that right then, right there. The sheriff has, you know, accounts, and he, you know, he's got to do a lot of cash collection, a lot of cash going out that, that isn't the county's money even. I mean, you know, paper service, well, they've got to put down a deposit, and he's got to figure up his mileage, and he refunds the rest of it and gives, gives the treasurer the, what he did earn.
And you don't audit any of those kinds of things here?
I don't audit them. I, I, I do get information and I look at it. I, I, it wouldn't, it's definitely not an audit. I'm not selecting checks to look at, I'm not looking at invoices and things like that. But I am looking at it. I mean, the sheriff has, you know, two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand come in from one year to the next. Well, it should remain similar. And it should reconcile from cash at the beginning of the year to cash at the end of the year. So I make sure those things happen, and I look, look to see if it looks normal.
You do look at those.
Look at it to see if it looks normal, which isn't an audit. But basically, my responsibility for audit is when it hits the treasurer and goes out with the clerk.
How many of those types of checking accounts do you think we have in, in, in its entirety?
Thirty, forty?
I don't know if it's that high. And we alleviated one from Transit Bus, they had one, is no longer in existence. Sheriff has like four, Detention has one, Kelly has one or two, Darla has one. I mean, it's just, there's.
What do I still have?
You still have a petty cash, don't you?
I have petty cash, but I think I got rid of my checking account.
That's what he's referring to.
Eliminated some, but you've got like that EBT and EBT card and stuff like that. I mean, you've just got some.
Okay.
I'm not saying they're not necessary.
Right.
Some of them are just necessary, clerk of the district court, you can't get, you got to have it.
The, I know that we have had, it's been, like I said, because it doesn't get what I perceive as close scrutiny has caused me a little bit of staying up at night, a little bit, but not much. I get pretty good sleep.
Close scrutiny, but of, so you, you've been down here doing investigations?
Nope, I haven't, and so I have no specific reason to have a concern, but the process is different and it just, I just, I guess, want to be sure that all of us up here are aware of those checking accounts and that they are.
Yeah, I mean, maybe that would be a great idea for everybody to report with what accounts they have to the board. And then you guys could have a, you know, list of what it's used for. I probably could make a list for you, but I think that'd be better for you guys to get.
And some of them do present you their reconciliations monthly, right?
Uh, yep, we get reports from Darla and Treasurers Office and others.
Jean.
Registered deeds, right?
And Kelly. Kelly sent some.
Yeah, so we get reports from some people.
But you could see how that's just, I mean, that's a lot to get your hands around. A lot of it's pretty immaterial. Some of it's, you know, bigger dollars, but it's, it's just all over the pack with it, really, really what it is.
I don't have a specific good answer to some of my concerns of it, but I'd just like to bring it up at this point in time to just make sure we're all aware of it, so.
That's a good, good idea. And that's, I mean, you'll, you'll hear, I mean, all I have to do is just search the energy for, for county problems and you'll, you'll find where somebody did something with those funds because they were the only signer on it, they did their reconciliation, nobody was looking over their shoulder. And that's kind of what that finding is really saying is, yeah, it very well could happen. I think for the bigger dollars, like, you know, tax receipts coming in, that's pretty hard to give somebody a receipt for their taxes and not get into the books.
Right, and we do have, that is separated in that.
That is separated, yeah.
Yeah, the receipts come to the treasurer's office and the bills are paid through the clerk's office. And so, for the most part, those are separated.
Yeah, there, there's some, there's some good, good things in there, there's some definite direct, you know, where, you know, people don't even touch the money, I mean, it comes straight from the bank to your bank and it's already in the bank account. So it, not, not that things can't happen, I mean, if you've got enough ingenuity and enough, enough authority to get in there and mess with stuff, yeah, it covers some stuff up, but, you know, it's working the way, the majority of it's working the way it's legislated to work.
All right, any other concerns or questions?
So in the, in the listing of the bonds here, most of them have dates of twenty twenty, twenty twenty, twenty seventeen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two. I would like to see, I would like, Lisa, just, just at some point in the future, if we could get the original date of those bonds, because those are all bonds that we refinanced when, when interest rates were, were very low during the pandemic. And so if we could get a list of when the, when the bond originated originally, and then also what those bonds are for.
Any other questions or concerns? Not Kevin, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. All right, move on to RCI.
All right, good evening. Once again, it's time to, did you want to start, Lisa?
Oh, I can. Just want to introduce Joe Lovelich, he's from Regional Care. We come to you every year at this time of year to renew our stop-loss carrier. The stop-loss coverage is for extraordinarily large claims. If we have a person who's gotten more than just a little sick, they're going to have bills over sixty thousand dollars. We need this, we need the stop-loss carrier to cover the county, county's obligation to pay. This is just insurance on, for, for our protection, for, it's kind of a risk management deal. We go, we, Joe goes out for bids, or Joe and the RCI team, and sometimes it's, we're going right down to the wire, but we have to have stop-loss coverage as of July one. So he's going to explain to you the process this year. It's been a little more, well, it's been more difficult because we've had more claims experienced this year than we have for the past five, six years. So, anyway, I'll, go ahead, Joe.
So like they said, every time that we go out to a number of different carriers, in some cases, we work with a managing general underwriter, which they have access to multiple carriers. And that kind of gives us a lot more options. And so we send it out to them, we give them all the reporting that we have on the group, which includes all of the high claimants. As Lisa mentioned, there were several more this year than what we've seen in years past that either met fifty percent or a hundred percent of the specific stop-loss. So because there were, there were so many people on that list, it did make it difficult to obtain reinsurance. We did get several declines from different carriers. We did go out to bid, last year, there was a competition presented. We do have access to the same carrier that, that competition was, that quoted on last year, so we did go out to that same carrier, and we received a quote from them as well. With some of these carriers, they, they looked at where the current deductible is for the county, and they said, that's too, too low. And because of that, we're not going to be competitive. And so that, that was part of the reason why they declined to quote. So in looking at the different options, one of the things that we could do is raise that deductible and then see what those carriers came back with. And because of that, we were able to find a pretty good solution as far as the overall fixed costs. If you go to the second page, that has the graph on it, this does show kind of the history of where we've been. It is not uncommon that a group will have a bad year every five to seven years. So if you look back at two thousand seventeen and eighteen, two thousand eighteen was a, a bad year and the costs, both on the fixed side of things, and then also on the variable cost, which is that estimated claim cost, that was also higher in two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen. So as we went out to bid this year, we were able to mitigate some of the fixed costs by increasing that deductible. So that fixed cost is only going up about seven, seven point two percent. The variable cost is going up, and you can see that there on the graph, but still lower than what it was in two thousand seventeen and eighteen. So our hope is that by managing our fixed costs this year, we can kind of weather the storm. So our hope is that, uh, by managing our fixed costs this year, um, we can, uh, kind of weather the storm of this, uh, higher claims cost. And, uh, we back to trending lower, uh, claims costs in the future. Um, we did make, one thing I wanted to point out is that we did, uh, change PBMs, which is the pharmacy benefit manager in January of this year. And so the, um, cost savings from that change maybe not have been fully realized, um, since it's only half of this contract. Um, so there's other things, there's rebates and things like that, that, uh, the, the plan hasn't yet received, uh, from that switch, uh, starting in January of two thousand twenty-four. So, um, I know I've kind of lays through that pretty quickly. On the third page, it actually shows, um, the different quotes and the different options that we have. The, uh, option four, I know they go out to four different carriers and option six goes out to two different carriers. Um, and both of those were declines. And in case, um, the recommendation and also, uh, that might be speaking on behalf of the insurance committee, the recommendation was also to go with option number two. And that's RCI's recommendation then. So, any question?
Yeah, you raised the deductible or you're on your quote, twenty thousand per occurrence?
Correct.
Do you know how much that they paid out last year? What was the total payout on?
Um, I don't have the number off the top of my head.
Is it on here?
It, it's not on this one. Um, it would be on that specific report.
I think we discussed it at the meeting at the insurance committee.
Yeah.
You, you discussed it?
Yeah, we did talk about it.
I think I've got it. I just got it.
I'd like to know that one.
We do have a separate fund that manages, that we use to manage our medical costs with, and it's, it's helped us weather this. It's, it's around one million to one million, two hundred thousand, so.
Looks like reimbursement was, uh, over five hundred and forty thousand.
Is what you guys paid back?
It's what the carrier paid back.
The carrier came back, but we're, but we're putting in eight hundred and twenty thousand.
And that's only through, um, uh, through the end of April's reporting.
And you said that you had a high claim year this year?
Yeah, the fixed cost is what we pay directly to RCI and then we have to pay a separate amount to cover our con- all of our employee claims that come through, so. I'm sure you realize that.
Stiff.
Um, and that's where I put in a note, the last time we had to increase deductible was twenty sixteen. And at that point, it was forty thousand. So we've been going along with the same deductible for eight years.
So when did we raise it to sixty?
Twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen went to sixty.
Twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. And that's where, which goes along with what you see up there. Variable costs were very high in those years. We're capping out. And we probably were having the same discussion.
So if you stay at the sixty thousand dollar deductible, what, uh, what's the rate on that? It doesn't show it.
It's on another page we had. Um, it raises how much we pay every month to RCI.
You're right. Just doesn't show it on here, just the recommendation's on.
No, cause we, we, we nixed that.
I'm sure you did, but I'd like to see it.
Do you see it there?
Hmm? There, you can reach. He's got it.
Um, so the fixed costs, if we stayed with the sixty thousand, um, it would go up to one point one million from eight, uh, eight hundred and twenty thousand.
One point one?
Yep. So by going with, um, uh, that raised deductible, it goes up to eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand, uh, versus the eight twenty that we're at now.
So our expense, um, the county's expense that, um, for last year, and I guess again, we're, this, this goes follows our, um, fiscal year, right? Um, and so I don't know that we have final numbers for right now at the end of, of June, but, um, I guess I'm trying to figure out what our costs were last year.
Eight hundred and twenty thousand.
Versus what's it gonna be this next year?
Don't you want to know what that?
That's eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
I know we don't know the, how many claims we're gonna have, but based upon our estimates, um, how much more would we be paying for insurance, health insurance above what we're paying now, I guess is my question. And what are you, are you proposing, I, I know you put out a memo to, uh, people preparing their budgets of how much they should figure, and it's the same amount, isn't it?
I didn't change that at this point.
Okay, and you're thinking that that's gonna be enough?
No. I haven't done the math on that. I haven't got a number for either.
Okay.
Hoping it can be fairly similar if we keep our fixed costs level, fairly level.
And.
But where does the eighty thousand come from, Lisa? Is that in the pool money you're talking about? For each occurrence, we need eighty, we need eighty?
Um, no. Well, yeah, it does come out of that pool. Every budget has money that's paying for health insurance. It's kind of interesting how we do it. You pay it out of the assessor's budget. And then that money is all moved from the general fund into the twelve fifty-seven fund to fund medical monthly claims and health claims. So we, we take the nine fifty per FTE for every department, whether they take the coverage or not, and we, we charge the department and then move that amount of money from general or what, or detention or whatever fund into this other fund as our source of use for the, for the, to pay our medical bills.
And we.
And we have a, a decent base.
We, we have how much in that account now? One point two?
I was gonna say one point two. It might be, it, we'll probably finish the fiscal year at nine hundred ninety to one million something. Cause we had, that's where we need this extra claims run, because we've had some significant, large claims we have to pay upfront. And then the reinsurance carrier will come in in July or August and reimburse us.
Because they've hit that sixty thousand?
Cause they've been sixty thousand plus. And we, we have to pay it before the end of the year, or we have to pay the deductible again if we don't pay it by July first.
There were, there were a couple of other deductibles discussed. We talked about seventy-five, eighty, all the way up to a hundred thousand.
Uh, we talked about. Up to a hundred thousand.
Up to a hundred thousand.
And, uh, HM, HM Life Insurance, they actually, their first, um, offer to us was only at a hundred thousand because they said that that's where the county should be. Um, and a couple of the other carriers had noted that too, that a group that is this size should be closer to a hundred thousand. Um, you know, we've been able to stay at sixty for quite a while, uh, because of our claims cost and, and that that's, uh, remained low and there's been some changes to, uh, deductibles and things like that that has helped with, uh, um, uh, mitigating some of that cost. Um, however, um, this year, there were too many, uh, people that were on that high claimant list um, to make that deductible still feasible. And last year, we considered, uh, we did talk through that, uh, to say, you know what? Does it make sense to move that deductible up? But based on the number of people that hit that deductible amount, it did not make sense to do that. Um, whereas this year it does.
So tonight, we're specifically talking about the reinsurance, uh, sixty or eighty thousand or whatever the case. We're not really talking about what, what RCI's part is, right? And what, what RCI charges. Is, is that part of this discussion as well?
It is. Uh, the fixed cost is in there too.
It's part. RCI, that's part of their monthly billing to us, this reinsurance cost.
And that difference is eight hundred and twenty up to nine sixty-three, is that right?
No, well, no, um, our, the cost to us is, um, uh, and the, uh, not only the, the cost of RCI but also the network that is used, which is Cigna, um, all of that together is roughly forty-four dollars per employee per month. So times, you know, less than two hundred, it's significantly less. This is, we, we get a very small portion of that, um, eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand. The majority of that cost is, um, is to the reinsurance carrier.
Is there a typo here on this? You got your current, that's sixty thousand dollar deductible, and then you move over to your renewal. You jumped it up to an eighty and your other one matches, but the numbers don't transfer down. Shouldn't your second line be a sixty thousand if it's just gonna be a renewal? Shouldn't that deductible been a sixty thousand on that first one that, and then you moved over to recommended and you put an eighty thousand on that?
Eighty and eighty.
They can't both be eighty. One of those should be a sixty, correct?
No. There's eighty and then there's eighty and eighty. We have an aggregate deductible that's a new, that's new to us this year to keep our fixed costs down.
Yeah, but they weren't, they were just, if we just renewed it as is, it would go to nine sixty-three. And that should be a sixty thousand dollar deductible to be a register, correct? And I moved over renewal.
No, if we kept it at sixty, our number would be, da, 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 is this, which one was it? I've got it to your front of me. You've got it.
I have it here. Um, and I, yeah, I apologize that, that that's confusing. The, um, it's with the same carrier. Um, and that's why the renewal op- uh, option is they, um, the same carrier provided, uh, an option at eighty thousand. And that's what we showed on this sheet that I gave you. Um, but like Lisa mentioned, we did go to that same carrier. We obtained a sixty thousand, seventy-five and a hundred thousand dollar deductible. Um, and I did not provide that sixty thousand dollar option to you guys. Um, so I apologize.
That one would have been like one, one point one, that is what you were talking about.
Right, right. And that's why it was significantly more.
Would it, would it is one point one?
But it's, it didn't transfer in my mind over here because you're, it says a renewal and, you know, it jumped up a hundred thousand. You'd assume that it was still on the same sixty thousand dollar deductible. I would be seeing, I'm not.
Yeah, I understand. Um, that third column does include an, an aggregating specific deductible. Um, and that is a way to also, um, mitigate some of that cost and I did, uh, in the, um, in this document here, I did talk about what that, uh, aggregating deductible, uh, aggregating specific means.
Well, something's.
It's just, there are different options.
Something's gotta be backwards here. You've raised the, the employee's cost and increased the premium as well. Over here, you lowered the, uh, cut, uh, employee cost and, and lowered the premium. It looks backwards to me. I can't see how that works.
It's that aggregating deductible that he's just referred to. By adding in another deductible, we can keep the costs even lower. It's that second line.
Where's this other deductible? What is the?
See it at the top, option two. There's eighty thousand and eighty thousand. This is another new line item. I'm gonna let Joe explain it to you, cause I, I, I do.
Those are two deductibles of eighty thousand per person.
There would be. This is what we're reme- we're recommending, what, what it means.
So, so what? Yeah, I, I don't think we've, I don't think anyone explained the aggregating, aggregating deductible, yeah.
Sure. Uh, it kind of combines the, both an aggregate and a specific. So what it does is it, um, a specific deductible is eighty thousand dollars per person, right? And then you have an aggregate deductible, which is the claims for the entire group for the entire year. So what an aggregating specific does is it takes a, um, the specific amounts and you have, um, eighty thousand dollars per person, but it adds another layer, which is only an eighty thousand dollar layer um, of anything over those, uh, specific levels. So for example, um, you get the first person and they have a hundred thousand dollar claim. You have to meet an eighty thousand dollar, um, s- uh, specific deductible on that person before the insurance will kick in. Um, and then there's the twenty thousand. The next person has a two hundred thousand dollar claim. Then you still have to meet eighty thousand dollars of that. And then above that, you would have to meet a hundred and twenty thousand. So between those two, where the, the first one, you had to meet twenty thousand, and then the next one, you had to meet a hundred and twenty thousand, you would still have to meet another eighty thousand dollars on top of that.
On top of all that.
On top of that. It's just a one-time thing and it only happens, um, you know, after each of the, you know, several members meet that eighty thousand dollars.
It's gonna push us higher than the, than the renewal.
No, or the aggregating, you meet it once. And you hope your claims are lower.
So in order to, to see the cost savings there, what I do is I look at the option two and I look at the fixed costs. And I know that, um, um, that I, uh, should be saving roughly eighty thousand dollars, uh, in fixed costs by putting that, that layer in there. And so the hope is that you don't have multiple people that hit over eighty thousand dollars. Um, chances are you probably would.
And if they do, how many, that still only hits one time, the eighty thousand dollar enters one time.
Right.
But you're not gonna pay the first person till they pay a hundred and twenty. So where does this twenty thousand come from that's on the top of that, that you were talking about?
It's all still just from the claims, uh, claims dollars at the county, you know, any of the other claims dollars that you have in your fund. But it's a let, uh, it's a layer to try to keep the fixed costs on a monthly basis, uh, lower.
Fixed costs you don't recoup. You pay, it's like paying for a major medical plan. You pay ninety thou- however much a month, and you pay it in and you'll never be able to hold any in your account. You pay it out, it's gone. It go, all goes to insurance. This is helping us keep some money here and it's kind of just a risk and we can, we may end up paying it out anyway. But maybe we won't. And it's in our coffers, not in some insurance. Insurance is expensive.
It is, but have we actually bid anybody against RCI to see if there's any other option?
Yeah, we did that last year and we stayed with RCI. We stayed self-insured.
How's that?
Okay.
Yeah, any oth- any other company would be, we'd be at their mercy.
Yeah, you would.
Raise premiums or whatever. At least if we're self-insured, that's the, that's the beauty of being self-insured is we own the, we own the, the, uh, policy. If we need to raise rates, if we need to change benefits or whatever the case might be, it's, it's our prerogative. And you don't have that if you're out with some of the company.
You know, this aggregate all sounds, you know, first time out, it sounds reasonable, but next year, they're gonna come and raise them both. You're not gonna raise one without the other, and it's just.
Oh, we don't, we don't.
Or they might not.
Oh, hell. I'd like to see it go the other way one day.
It stayed sixty for eight years or so?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but, um, I guess we just have to. What we're saying so far is that we're gonna leave those rates, um, those, um,
Fixed costs.
The, yeah, and what they, what has to be put into the pool, so to speak, from the departments, per person or per family or whatever it is, um, are at a certain level. And we're gonna hope that we can maintain that level. And I'm assuming if we can maintain that level, we can look at keeping, um, employee deductibles in a reasonable area. But as those go up, I suspect we'll be viewing, what are the deductibles per employee?
Deductibles and premiums, monthly premium.
Right. So, anyway, um, but I think, uh, I think with the information we have at this point, that this is probably the recommendation's probably the best at this point. And then we're just gonna have to keep an eye on, um, what happens to that one point two million. And are we maintaining that at a reasonable level?
Oh, exactly.
Or if we're starting to, to dip into that excessively, then we're gonna have to reassess, um, the amount of money per month, per person.
One.
That's true.
One, one of the things that over the years, there was a period where we had a, a large amount, I, and that's probably not a good term. Several, uh, older employees that had a lot of different types of health issues. Yeah, yeah, probably, yeah. Probably, yeah. I'm, I'm not older anymore, but that's where you get the, that's where you get the highs and the lows and, and we've over the years, our, our employee base is becoming, I think, a little younger, a little healthier. Have the wellness programs and the different things that are, that are happening, even with the drug program. Uh, you know, rather than.
Uh, you know, rather than run to the emergency room when you have a, the sniffles, you can go to quick care or go buy something over the counter. And, and I think that the education that RCI has provided for us over the years has definitely helped that. Uh, to kinda keep all of those costs down. Plus our, our, the age of our employees is not as old as it used to be. I'm trying, I'm trying to be politically correct here. But, but there was, there was a point where we had a tremendous amount of, of folks, good people, good workers, long-time employees, that were having, you know, coming into health issues that we had to pay for. And, uh, we don't see that that much anymore. They're still there, but not, not like it used to be. So I think we're, I think we're better.
Some of the risks that's coming in now is more on the pharmacy side of things.
Right.
Where there are very high-cost drugs, um, and we've been able to, um, to mitigate that as well. Um, we're currently working on one that's, um, very expensive, um, that we feel like we're gonna be able to, um, get that cost down below that, um, eighty thousand dollar specific level. So, um, that's another thing to point out on this renewal, um, is that in years past, you had lasered individuals. That means that you had to meet, you know, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of claim liability before the insurance would kick in. And there were multiple people, um, that, that had met that criteria. In some cases, um, uh, this year, there are no, no lasers on this, uh, offer, so.
That's incredible.
Just one.
So that's incredible. And we, the employees maybe are still with us, but they are not penalizing us because we've, because of concerns with people's health conditions.
I think there was one year we had two transplants or something years ago, and I mean, it, it was, it was really, really high.
Yeah, yeah.
We, we spent a ton of money on our employees. But again, we don't see that anymore and that's starting to go down. Hopefully continue to do that. Okay. Any other questions for Joe? If not, we'll move on. Discuss and consider the health insurance plan renewal, reinsurance carrier. I would entertain a motion for either approval or denial of the plan that's just been presented. Just need one.
So specifically option two, the recommended?
Yes.
So I would move that we would, um, accept and the option two recommendation from United States buyer company.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, so I just had a few things. So this is, um, we're just renewing the, the stop loss, right? And there's a different time of the year that we, we renew RCI as the, our insurance provider.
I'm not sure what. We, we went through this about this time last year, but it would probably be more on the cal- calendar year. Maybe it would be at this time next year. So this is just the stop loss. We don't go about for bid every year on our insurance. I mean, done it once in seven years here.
We've done it once in seven years.
Mm-hmm, and that was last year.
But they're not the insurance provider. They're just a third-party.
Administrator.
Manager.
Right. So, and I believe last year was the first and only time that we've asked for other bids, other companies. And I think it worked out to our benefit.
I think so too.
So why didn't we, why didn't we do more than one bid this time?
I think, I, I, it wasn't questioned. We have, we work with people within town that we can work with that assist us through the processes, find us solutions. And didn't think we needed to go out for bid. I was never.
I think, I thi- I think the, the, when we went out for bid last year, it actually turned out that the competing bidder, uh, was also very helpful in, in getting these rates and, and actually assisting RCI, um, to get those rates lower. If I remember correctly.
And as I mentioned, the, um, the carrier that was on that bid was HM Life. And we did go to them this year as well to see if they could get a competing bid that was, uh, lower. Um, and if you look at the, uh, spreadsheet there, they are the, um, third option. And, uh, their employee-only cost was lower. Um, but if you look at the total, um, fixed costs, it actually ended up being higher. Um, because the family, uh, rate and the employee plus children rate was higher, um, than, than that. So we did go to them, uh, to see if we could get a competing bid. And we always would go, uh, with the other carriers and go back to the incumbent, uh, to see if they would lower their costs.
Now, you're talking about the reinsurance.
Reinsure, yeah.
He's not.
Right.
He's, he's talking about the third-party administrator, the competition to you. That's what he's talking about, right?
Yes. But behind, behind every third-party administrator, there's the carrier that is the majority of the cost. So our costs are, like I said, our costs are very low compared to that total number. Um, but the carrier is the cost that is really driving what you're seeing there, yeah.
Is passed through, I see.
Yeah. And the, the question on the table is for the reinsurance carrier right now.
Right.
Is there any other discussion? Record your votes.
Hang on. Sorry.
What did you do?
I opened the wrong one.
Well, go sit in the hallway, Kelly.
There we go. See ya.
Say don't throw a nerve.
Did they record now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Got it, alright.
Ken and Russ.
Just a quick question. Is that insurance meeting, um, is that a, is that an open meeting? Is that a public meeting?
No.
Okay, what was your, what was your vote, Kelly?
You have five yeses, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Alright, next item. Received NACO updates, Mr. Cannon. How are you? Welcome to Western Nebraska.
Well, very much.
Get you out here in the, in God's country.
I appreciate the opportunity. Any time, any chance I get, invite me out every week and I'll be here.
That's fine.
Well, ma- maybe not. I, I, I think, I think Kansas would probably, uh, get on me about running up the, the bill, but, um, anyway, my name's John Cannon. I'm the executive director of Your Nebraska Association of County Officials. And like I typically say, it is your association, um, you know, every square inch of, of the building that, uh, is, you know, that I sit in is owned by you guys. Uh, if you'd like, I can point out the carpet square that's got your name on it and, you know, the brick that's got your name on it and all that good stuff. But, uh, um, you know, NACO is a membership organization, um, and, um, you know, like I said, you guys own us. And so, uh, we figure it's always fun to invite you to the party in Kearney. Uh, we saw a few of you at the, uh, workshop last week. Lisa was there. Um, but, uh, I mean, it's more meaningful when we come and tell you what we're up to and come to where you live. And so, uh, several years ago, when I became the executive director at NACO, um, or actually before I became the executive director at NACO, I, I told the staff, we're going to be on the road. We're going to talk to, uh, all of our counties and we're gonna try to attend as many board meetings as we can. Uh, and if it's multiple board meetings for each county, that's, that's not a problem. That's, that's what we're here for because, um, we're supposed to, that's, that's just the job. So, uh, we're an, an education and advocacy organization primarily, and I'm gonna talk about those resources that we have available to you. Uh, first one, housekeeping item. If you have a copy of our directory, uh, we recently switched carriers, uh, so you have to add a one to all the extensions. So, uh, sorry about that. It's, uh, just remind yourself to put a one in front of my extension or, or anyone else's. Uh, for what it's worth, don't, don't call me on my extension at the office. Just call me on my cellphone. It's a lot easier way to get ahold of me. Um, so talking about the education resources that we have, as you know, last week, we had the county budget workshop. We had the county board workshop. Uh, there's a number of other workshops that we put together. Um, we help with the clerks workshop, with the treasurers workshop, assessors workshop. Uh, we have a legislative workshop that'll be coming up in October. Uh, we have the annual meeting, uh, the annual conference that we have in Kearney every December of each year. And so, uh, there's a number of, of things that we have coming on. So, uh, about the legislative conference that this year will be in October eleventh in Ogallala. And it'll be at the, at the new building. This is the plan.
Wow.
So, um, as you know, anytime that you're en- engaged in construction, you're always wondering. It's like, are we gonna make this date or not? I'm pretty sure we're going to, but, uh, that's always in the back of your head, so. Um, and I, I would like to talk about the building briefly. Um, so a few years ago, when I became the executive director, I said, I've never done any executive directing before. And so I asked, went to the NACO board and I said, what do you want us to do? What are some of the things that we do that we shouldn't be doing? What are some of the things that we're not doing that we should? What are some of the things that we're doing that we could be doing better? And we went through a number of different things. A lot of it related to the software company that we own, uh, MIPS. Um, and, and you guys use MIPS for a number of different applications. Um, a lot of it related to just the business of counties. And so, um, we undertook about a, probably about a nine-month study, as I recall. And, and I'm gonna mention Charlie in particular, actually. We got to the end of that year and, and I, I put a list of, of all those different things that we talked about. And I said, just give us your priorities, um, as to how you want us to tackle these things. And the board said, yes. And I said, that's, that's not priority, uh, prioritizing. And it was Charlie that said, well, I think between John and Candace, you guys can handle all this in your spare time. And we all had a great chuckle. And then the board said, no, but we're, we're serious. So, um, one of the, the rejoinder to that is I said, well, if you want us to try and be all things of all counties, we can do that. That's, that's part of the job. Um, but it's going to require a little bit of a different model than how we've functioned in the past. And so, while we always have to be, uh, in Lincoln because of that giant building, this catty corner from our, from our office, um, Nebraska's a very large state. Seventy-seven thousand square miles. It's four hundred and fifty-six miles from Omaha to Kimball. Um, you know, and, and the road goes both ways. And so, if I'm going to send somebody to Harrison, which you guys know is as far away from Lincoln as you can get, still being the state of Nebraska, uh, it's an eight-hour drive out, it's an eight-hour drive back. And they're gonna spend a couple hours doing whatever they're doing. That's two and a half days if you've got one person devoted to one county. But, and that's, that's not a problem. I mean, that's, that's what we do. But it's not the most efficient distribution of our resources. And so, uh, we, we mentioned that to the, the NACO board, thinking that surely they would never ask us to do anything, you know, radical, like putting an office in Western Nebraska. And the board said, let's go for it. And so, um, Candace and I took a, a trip in February of two thousand twenty-two. Went out to Ogallala, cause that's where we were thinking about going. And, uh, we looked at a number of different properties. We looked at, uh, a church that was, that was looking to not be in the church business anymore. Uh, we looked at, um, an old, uh, I think it was like a one-room schoolhouse at one point. We looked at an old abandoned sun mart, uh, which, you know, when it's February and shadows are, are lengthening and the, the, you know, chirpy little realtor says, let's go look at the meat slicers. And you think, ah, I'm not exactly sure I'm sold in this place. And then we looked up, went and looked up at the business park up north of town. And, and, uh, we put all this in front of the board. The board said, let's buy our own lot, let's, uh, build a building. And so, you know, again, kinda shocked me. I didn't think they were going to go there, but they went there. Um, so anyway, we selected an architect. We've got a, uh, um, you know, constructors, uh, construction company and, and that building's coming along. They broke ground last June and we should be done sometime late August, mid-September, somewhere thereabout. So, we're very excited, um, also very terrified, cause I've never done a project like this before. So, uh, uh, but it is, it is something where, um, I think it represents the fact that it's an investment by NACO in the rest of the state. Uh, I tell all my friends in the lobby when I, when I talk to them, you know, uh, when the legislature's debating where to send money, almost always it's gonna go to Lincoln and Omaha, but the majority of it will. Uh, if you don't believe me, just look at TOSA. And if you don't know what TOSA is, it's because it's not sending any money out to Western Nebraska. Um, but I talked to my friends in the lobby and I'm like, you know, if, if you don't invest in something, pretty soon you're gonna have to end up paying for it. And they're like, oh, well, you know, what's NACO doing? And I'm like, we're putting a building on Ogallala. That's what we're doing. So, um, I believe it's important. Um, you know, we're, we're one state. We represent ninety-three counties. And, you know, it, it stands for reason that we should invest in, in places that aren't just Lincoln. So, uh, we're excited about that. And so, going full circle and coming back to what I originally got on the subject about, our legislative conference should be in the building in Ogallala. We're, uh, looking forward to that. And, and the reason we have that legislative conference, and the reason I'm, I'm presenting it to you is, um, every year, the NACO board gets together and they say, what are our legislative priorities going to be for the upcoming session? And the assessors, the clerks, the treasurers, the sheriffs, the attorneys, the superintendents, highway supers, uh, they all make a presentation of, here's some things we'd like the board to consider. And, uh, that's how we've been doing it for years. And a few years ago, I got a call from one of our board members, Bill Selfie's a Hope County Supervisor. And, and Bill said, you know, John, I'd like to talk about township roads. Can you put some room on the agenda for me? I said, sure, Bill. You know, why not? No problem. And so we went through everyone's presentation and, and again, assessors, the clerks, treasurers are all incredibly well organized. We had, basically had everything almost in virtual draft form. And went through and the board, you know, took notes and asked questions and all that. And we got to Bill. I said, Bill, you're up. And he said, you know, well, let's talk about township roads. I said, well, you know, what did you want to do? And he says, I just wanted to talk about it. And I thought, oh goodness, that's not what we're, we're supposed to do. So that was really my fault. I, I put Bill in a little bit of a bad position. Um, so what I've, I've hit upon is need to have you guys as organized, boards as, as well organized as, as all the other, uh, groups are. And so, um, you know, you've got your, your sun, uh, your, your Panhandle District Representative, that's Steve Burke, uh, from Fox Creek County. You've got your officer on the NACO board, that's Charlie Knapper. Um, you can go to them with ideas that you have. Uh, you can call me, you can call Beth Farrell, Candace Meredith, Elaine Menzel, and we will put something together so that, uh, if you wanna make a presentation to the NACO board, you have that opportunity and kinda suss out all the details and talk to the stakeholders and all the things that you're supposed to do. Um, so anyway, if, if you have an idea, and, and, and again, county boards have a little bit more unique, uh, perspective on how county government operates, uh, than each of the individual row offices. And, and it's no better or worse, cause the row offices are here. Um, but you have a different perspective. And so because of that, if you ever thought, there ought to be a law, this doesn't make sense how we're doing things as a board, based on what you observe, your opportunity to have NACO do something about it is at our legislative workshop. And so, um, I'd like to invite all of you. That'd be great to have you out there. We're gonna have a ribbon-cutting ceremony before the conference. So, um, you know, we'll see how that, that whole thing goes. But, uh, on the subject of the building, when we decided that we were going to build this thing, um, you know, we, we talked, originally we talked about, let's just rent some office space in downtown Ogallala. And that wasn't quite, wasn't quite gonna give us the return on investment they were looking for. And so we ended up saying, we're gonna build something. Um, and it wasn't just going to be office space for us. Uh, what we decided was we were going to, uh, build some office suites that we could rent out. We're gonna have a meeting space that we could also rent out or use for our own purposes. Uh, and so the, the office suites that we have, we have three of them. We, all three of them are rented out. Uh, the first taker was Zell Human Resources. I, I saw them on your agenda, by the way. Later on, you're gonna talk about your public defender. Uh, for what it's worth, they're the, uh, human resources company that selected me as a candidate to be the deputy director at NACO, so I think those guys are awesome. Um, but, uh, the second tenant that we had signed up was the attorney general of the state. Uh, he's gonna have the southeast corner, which is actually pretty nice. He's got windows all around, so good for him. And then the third tenant that we're going to have is Next Era Energy, a pipeline company. And so, uh, we've, we've got that part taken care of. Uh, I've been talking to a number of organizations like Cattlemen Farm Bureau, Bar Association. And they're all very, very interested in, in making sure that they have some meeting space in Ogallala. And, you know, what better place? You're just south of the lake, just north of town. Uh, so it's a, you can have a good time if you're out there. That's not what we're ever going to go there for. It's gonna be all, all business, all work, no play. Um, but, uh, and so anyway, the, the thing is, is that that building's going to be full on day one. Uh, we've already got our own staff that we're going to be putting in there. Greg Mooney, who's our, um, NACO Benefit Services representative, uh, we hired him in February. He, he lives in North Platte. He's going to be officing out of Ogallala. Uh, Peggy Brass, who's our operations clerk, uh, she's in Lincoln right now, but she's, originally she worked in the moral county clerk's office. And so, uh, a few months ago, I went to Peggy and I, I very kindly and diplomatically and as gently as possible, I said, Peggy, we, we rely on you, we trust you. Uh, we, you know, you're an ad- you're an incredible asset to the team and, and we trust you so much, in fact, that we would be very comfortable if you wanted to work out of Ogallala. And, uh, her first response to me was, are you trying to get rid of me? And I thought, well, that didn't go the way I wanted it to. Uh, but she thought about it, talked it over with her family and, and, you know, her family lives in, in the Panhandle Denver, um, area. So she accepted that offer. We're gonna help her with her moving expenses and she's gonna be, uh, part of the staff out there as well. Um, this week, Candace and Riley are going to be interviewing people for a marketing, uh, and events coordinator. So when I say that building's going to be full, the building's going to be full. Uh, if, if you know Candace Meredith, you know that she's gonna squeeze every nickel that she can out of every last square inch of space that we've got. So, uh, that's what we're working on there. Um, some other things that, that came out of that, that very fateful meeting where Charlie told us to just go ahead and do everything. Uh, we got into cybersecurity. Uh, they, they'd asked about that. And while cybersecurity isn't something that we do, uh, we're not going to lay cable and we're not going to, certainly not going to take on that liability. What we did do is we partnered with NERMA. Uh, we, we talked to a few of the other vendors, the main vendors in the state. Um, Bytes Inc., uh, located here in Scotts Bluff, Applied Connected out of Albion. They were the two first, uh, vendors that we had talked to. And we talked about, you know, what are some, uh, very basic standards that we can have for small, medium and large counties? Uh, what are some, you know, uniform or tiered pricing that we can have for, uh, different-sized counties? And what we wanted to do, and, and we, we wanted this thing to be open to everybody. We didn't want it to have a, a closed syndicate, because first of all, that sounds kinda sinister, but, um, second of all, we, we wanted to make sure that there was the ability to have coverage all across the state. And so, uh, we have a cybersecurity cooperative that we formed, uh, in partnership with, with NERMA and all the other vendors and, and any other vendor in the state. As long as they're willing to abide by those standards, uh, they can join in as a vendor as well as part of this cooperative. And so, very, very pleased that ninety-two out of ninety-three counties have a managed IT service that's providing their cybersecurity. Um, that's great. The ninety-third one is, not to name names, but it's Arthur County and, and they're probably going to sign up here in the next, uh, probably the next board meeting or so. So, uh, we're looking forward to that. The reason I, I like to stress cybersecurity is because, uh, we've had a couple of ca- counties in Nebraska that have gotten hit by ransomware attacks. The reason I, I like to stress cybersecurity is because, uh, we've had a couple of ca- counties in Nebraska that have gotten hit by ransomware attacks in the last few years, costing millions of dollars. Um, and so, if you think that no one would be interested in the information that a county has, uh, I can tell you that Kelly has, um, social security number information, uh, from your citizens. That, uh, Heather probably has bank routing information for a number of your constituents. And that, uh, your, your, um, assessor, Robert, has, uh, taxpayer identification number from people that file personal property returns. So, there is information that bad people would like to get that's, uh, in the county's hands. So, very important, uh, cybersecurity. Uh, one of the reasons I, I did want to mention this though, is that there are some folks, I mean, you know, in county government, uh, I, I know that you guys, I've just got to watch all the questions you had about insurance and everything else, uh, that you're, you want to make sure that you're delivering the best possible service you can to your constituents, at the lowest possible cost. Um, and so, with cybersecurity, anytime you're talking about computers, the bill just kind of runs up, uh, very, very quickly. And so, to the extent that a provider might say, hey, you need to buy a new rack of servers, or you need to new, buy some new equipment in whichever office, that can be a daunting task for anybody. And, uh, even the, you guys are the ninth Plaques County in the state, I think, seventh Plaques County in the state. Um, even as big a county as you guys are, it's still a fairly daunting task. Um, and so, I just want to mention to you that there are grants that are out there from both the federal and the state government. And so, uh, if you have, if, if, so you're ever presented with something and you're like, yeah, you know, we're, we're not sure about the cost, let us know and we will help you find those funding opportunities if, if there are any to apply. So, I wanted to bring that message as well. Sign up for our weekly newsletters, there's a lot of information that we put out there. Um, we talk about a, a number of things that, uh, where we partner with different vendors. And so, um, you know, there's a lot of information that we push out that way, especially with our legislative newsletter, uh, during the legislature, which I will talk about in a second. Um, I do want to mention the National Association of Counties, you guys are members. Um, and I will just say that, um, you know, the, the National Association of Counties, they, uh, they were really the ones that were behind counties across the country receiving a direct allocation from ARPA. Uh, something we've never seen before, I doubt we'll ever see again. Um, and so, if you, and, and they, they worked with the Trump Administration, the Biden Administration, uh, both houses of Congress, both parties in Congress, US Treasury Department to make sure that that direct allocation got made. Uh, and so, if, if you took your almost seven million dollar allocation that Scotts Bluff, uh, County received, and you divided that by your annual membership dues, uh, for the National Association of Counties, it would pay for over nine thousand years of membership. Now, I'm not suggesting that you do that, that would be illegal. Um, but, uh, it is just to show you what the return on investment is, it's a pretty good deal if you ask me. Um, and then it kind of is part of that, with, with the National Association, uh, we recently applied for, we were granted membership in this organization called the Western Interstate Region of NACO. Um, and it's, uh, as you might expect, it's an organization that's come comprised mostly of states to the west of us. Uh, the Dakotas and Minnesota are also members of that as well. Um, and primarily they're interested in things involving land conservation, uh, payments in lieu of taxes, or federal land where the, the federal government makes payment in lieu of tax, uh, wildfires, conservation easements, waters of the US, those sorts of things that we're very, very interested particularly in Western Nebraska. And so, uh, Bob Post, who's former Banner County Commissioner just south of here, he was a huge proponent of, of WIR. Um, and so, we, again, we applied for membership. Uh, for whatever reason, despite the fact that I, I was the one making the pitch, they, they granted it to us. So, we're very excited about that. Uh, we're probably going to have to, Charlie, heads up, we're probably going to have to have a new board member, um, as an ex officio. So, we'll be talking about bylaw change here in the next meeting. Um, do you want to talk about the legislature real quick? We, as you know, we finished our legislative session, we're going to have a special session, the governor has, has announced that it's going to be from, well, he's told lawmakers to clear their calendars between July twenty-ninth and August sixteenth. Um, what I've heard is that it's going to be July twenty-ninth to August nine, we're going to be talking about property taxes. And anytime you talk about property taxes, NACO is going to be there at the fore. Um, you know, and, and the thing I, I like to tell people is that the reason that we're always there and the reason that they want to hear from us, even if they very frequently ignore us, um, is because while we are only one-sixth of the property tax load in the state, and actually a little bit less than one-sixth, we are one-hundred percent of the process, right? So, um, Rob Simpson, he sets values, um, he sends out, you know, the, well, he, he does his preliminary evaluations, he sends that information up to the Property Tax Administrator. She looks at it, scrubs it, they, they go to Turk, if Scotts Bluff County needs to, you guys participate in, in statewide equalization process. We send out the valuation notices in, in, uh, on or before June first. You guys hear valuation protests as part of County Board of Equalization. Uh, when that's all done, we certify, the county certify the values to all the political subdivisions. Uh, we take the budgets, you approve the levy rates that each political subdivision, uh, sets. And then we, we're the ones that process the tax statement, we send out the tax bill, uh, and we go ahead and ultimately collect and or foreclose on properties. We are one-hundred percent of the process, that means all complaints come to us, and I'm sure you guys are aware of that. Uh, so anyway, if it's about property taxes, we're going to be there. You know, and we all know, and, and I'm, I'm going to preface this by saying, I have no quarrel with the schools, I think they do a fine job. But sixty percent of the property tax load is, comes from the schools. And so, anytime you're talking about property taxes and, and, uh, high property taxes in the state of Nebraska, um, that's probably one of the first places that we start looking. And so, I suspect that we're going to talk about school funding a lot during the special session. I also suspect, well, I know, uh, because I talked to the governor last week, that we're going to talk about caps on political subdivision spending. And what we had negotiated during the session, it, it put most counties in Nebraska in a pretty good spot. We had limited exceptions that I think put the rest of the counties in a fairly decent spot, where we, we're going to be able to continue doing what we do. Which, you know, by the way, and I've said this before, we do roads, bridges, law enforcement, jails, courts and elections. Uh, things that people do not want any less of. And just as, just as, as a show, out of curiosity, show of hands, how many of you have heard people say, there's too much gravel on our roads? How many people have, how many of you have said we have too many sheriff's deputies out there? Uh, how many of you have said, you know, gosh, I, I wish we could have, uh, less efficient elections? Uh, I don't think you're getting those complaints. What we provide is, is kind of bedrock fundamental stuff that government does. And so, um, you know, when, anytime you talk about putting on caps, especially in an environment where year over year, the price of gravel's gone up ten and a half percent, hot, next asphalt's up nine percent, uh, caps are a real thing. Uh, so you guys were just talking about insurance, that's also a real thing that you guys have to pay for, that isn't accounted for by any cap. Uh, so we're going to talk about those, we're going to make sure that we've got exceptions for county governments. Um, the other part of that, of course, when you talk about county revenues, the inheritance tax, that was a big thing that was up this year. LB ten sixty-seven was introduced by Senator Rob Clemens. Um, I will tell you that before the session started, we were having a, a meeting about, about property taxes, uh, in the governor's residence. And, uh, I, I made an offhand comment that, you know, hey, we can, counties can live with caps on property taxes, as long as we're not talking about eliminating the inheritance tax. And two senators that were part of this group laughed in my face and they said, the inheritance tax is gone, John, and there's nothing you can do about it. I said, alright, game on, we'll see how this goes. Um, and so, the call went out, you guys get, probably got tired of getting emails from me, but I appreciate the response. Um, you know, statewide, if, I think just about every county board, at least one person contacted their state senator. Not every senator was with us, but enough were where, uh, that filibuster was successful. Uh, in, in fact, I think that we had enough votes to kill the bill instead of just having to worry about filibustering it. So, I just want to say thank you for the effort. Uh, I know, I know a few of you made, made contact with your, your state senator, I'm still going to keep working on, on Senator Harden. Um, and so, we'll, we'll see how, you know, how, how he comes along with us. But thank you, I do, really do appreciate it because I can stand over in the rotunda all day long and it's not going to make a difference unless you guys talk, talk to your state senators. Um, the thing I, I tell people all the time is that, and I tell senators this, is that their voters are our voters. And so, they're going to listen to you because you're the, the form of government closest to its people. So, again, thank you for that. Um, and, and as part of that, you know, I, I want to, uh, just ask you to continue to be engaged. Um, I know that Senator Harden, he'll, he visits with, with, uh, most of you guys on the board, or at least that's what he's told me. Um, so keep that up. Uh, there's going to be an election here for, for your district in two years. If anyone is thinking about running, make sure they come to county board meetings. I mean, they need to be in front of you guys, understanding what it is that we're going through, understanding that you've got insurance that you have to pay for. Understanding, understanding that you've got a budget that you have to take care of. You know, law enforcement doesn't pay for itself as much as we might, we might like it to. Um, they need to understand how kind of government works. And I will tell you that in, in the legislature, out of forty-nine people, there are four people in there that are former county board members, two of them I would claim. Um, I won't go any further than that. Um, but, and, and it's, it's just a, a difficult thing to get people to understand how our budgets work and the sorts of things that we have to deal with. Um, so, continue that advocacy, get people in front of the board, have them understand what's going on here. Um, a couple of bills that did get signed, uh, that I did want to talk about that affect counties. I mean, there's a number of bills, and I went through this last, last week at the, um, county board workshop. But LB forty-three, uh, that has to do with Open Meetings Act and Public Records Laws. On the, um, Open Meetings Act, uh, whereas we've always had the rule that the public has to be allowed to speak at meetings, but it doesn't necessarily have to be at all meetings. Um, now, the law requires that the public has to be allowed to speak at every single meeting. Uh, so that's a change of the Open Meetings Act. That doesn't take effect until July nineteenth. We were going to print up posters for you as these changes become apparent. And so, uh, what we've suggested to the, all the clerks is print out a, a, you know, just print out a copy of what the Open Meetings Act has, here are the statutes. You know, place it, either place it in the room or place it next to the Open Meetings Act poster that you have, and we'll, we'll send you a poster when it's updated. Uh, the other part of LB forty-three is that, uh, for public records requests, it used to be that the first four hours of searching were free to anybody. Uh, now, it is the first eight hours of searching are free to citizens or the press. And so, any non-citizens, you can just, you know, charge them out the wazoo, so good luck with that. Um, and then the other bill I wanted to talk about, which I thought was fairly significant, LB nine thirty-eight, um, that has to do with the County Purchasing Act. And so, as you guys know and have known for a long, long time, if you have a purchase over fifty thousand dollars, you have to put it out for a formal bid and have the three silk bids that come in and you open it up in an open meeting and all that good stuff. And then there are various thresholds for less formal bids below that. That initial threshold has been raised from fifty to seventy thousand dollars starting on Jul- uh, January first of twenty twenty-five, and all the other thresholds kind of go up in all extent with that. So, um, and then in twenty-seven, it's going to go up, I think, to ninety thousand dollars, and then twenty-nine will go up to a hundred and ten thousand dollars, just so we can keep pace with inflation. That is all I have, I want to return to what I had said originally, which is NACO is a membership organization. I think you all have my cellphone number, call me at any time. Uh, I am your employee and I, I'm very proud to be an employee for the counties because I don't have to take hard votes and I don't have to go out and earn anybody's votes, but I get to represent you guys on things that are very meaningful to the people of the state, and nobody knows my name, it's the best of all worlds, so. Um, happy to take any questions you might have.
I don't have a question, John, I just, again, want to thank you for, for the work that you're doing for us. Uh, if, if you have an opportunity to watch the legislature and you look out in the rotunda, uh, John's pretty easy to spot. Uh, he's there, he's working for us, uh, he's quick to return phone calls, texts, emails, whatever. Uh, and, and we appreciate that representation, we really do.
Thank you.
We really do, you're doing, as far as I'm concerned, you're doing fine.
Thank you, appreciate it, and especially with one of my board members that's responsible for my salary sitting rights next to you.
I understand.
I would, I would just make a comment, um, you know, for, for how long was Larry Dix the Executive Director?
Nineteen years.
Nineteen years, so for nineteen years, NACO had what I'd call the best linebacker, best middle linebacker, or the best nose tackle, um, in the lobby, um, you know, defending, defending counties, um, defending counties for, for the inheritance tax. Um, we're currently working on a, a deal that, mm, uh, would potentially eliminate the inheritance tax, but replace the inheritance tax with a hundred percent revenue. We're working throughout the summer on this thing. Uh, we worked really hard throughout the legislative session last, uh, winter, um, to get this done. It didn't, it didn't, it didn't happen at the eleventh, at the eleventh hour. Um, but, I would, I would encourage you guys to, to, to join us, um, in this effort to eliminate the inheritance tax by finding a hundred percent replacement revenue. And because, as I said, Larry Dix was a great nose tackle or middle linebacker, but I think John Cannon is a point guard or a quarterback. And he can move, he can move this organization forward like we've never seen before. If we, if we get him out of his defensive stance, um, and quit playing defense against the, uh, re- repeal of the inheritance tax. And, and let him really just kind of, um, play offense and, and move NACO forward, so. As we talked to Brian Harden, um, you know, I, I think it's important to, and, and I know a lot of you guys talked to others, other state senators across the state. So, um, as you talk to those guys too, um, if we could, if we could find a way to replace the inheritance tax with, with something more fair, um, I think, I think we really need to move in that direction. Not only for the benefit of the taxpayers, the landowners, you know, the, the, the people who are paying the inheritance tax, but also for the benefit of the counties and for the be- benefit of NACO as an organization. I, 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 I strongly believe that's, that's the direction we need to go. You know, and, and NACO does a lot of good things that, um, lower the costs of government for all Nebraska counties.
I agree.
Um, you know, we're, we're working on the MIPs stuff now, you know, new software coming out, uh, that's going to, you know, provide efficiencies and, and, um, resources to, to both county offices and, and our constituents. Um, streamline some processes to make, make, make counties run more efficiently. And, um, you know, it's a, it's a, it's an exciting time for NACO, um, and it truly is an honor to, to be able to sit on that board. And, um, you know, I think we've got a, a bright future there, so.
Oh, tha- thanks Charlie, I appreciate that, I was, we were, you were going to say I was an okay water boy, so.
No, no, not, I, I wouldn't dog you in public, just, just in board meetings.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments? John, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome here anytime.
Appreciate it.
Alrighty. Uh, before we move on, we're working on almost two hours since we started. Would like to take a, just a short five-minute break, and then we'll be back and continue on the, uh, on the agenda.